Hi, Happy New Year to everybody. It's good to see everybody's smiling faces tonight. And looking forward to a good meeting tonight, but a relatively short one it looks like. So, let's get started. We're gonna start out tonight, and I've got to introduce, I have a special guest tonight, a special guest and her family, is Samantha Valentini. Samantha, if you'll stand up. Samantha is a most charming 4th grader, very smart girl from Indian Trail Elementary School. And she gave me a tour along with a couple classmates when I got to be principal for a day. How many months ago was this?
Um, I think it was...
In October?
Yeah, October.
In October. So, it was one of the highlights of my year. I really believe that. It was a fabulous day, and you guys did a wonderful job. So, I wanted to introduce you, but I'd like for you to come up here. And if either one of your sisters want to come up too, they can. So, come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Come on up. Put you this way. There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in the first place.
If everybody remains standing, and you two stand here for a moment of silence. You may be seated. I want you to, I gotta seat change for you.
Emma, I'm gonna sit there.
Samantha, this right here is where Councilman Barber usually sits, and I've never known Councilman Barber to miss a meeting. So, I think he must have known you were coming tonight. So, Samantha's gonna sit up here with us and be a councilperson for a while. So, I appreciate you doing that. And actually, Councilman Barber and Councilman Buholic both are missing tonight, and that, I don't know that, we've had that happen in a long, long, long time. So, we're gonna miss them both tonight. And they don't know what they're missing either, so.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome and tell everybody about some upcoming events that we're having here in town. On Saturday, the 28th of January, we have Program Open House. Enjoy a light snack and explore some of the programs Indian Trail will be offering in the coming year. Learn about programs such as pre-K holiday classes to teen fashions, customization, and adult art. On February the 3rd, now here's something, we got the Harlem Wizards. And I don't think, Hayden's not here to explain it. So, I'll read it, and then I'll tell you a little bit about it. Adam, you're shaking your head. Adam, do you know, how much do you, no, you don't know that much about it. It's an inspiring basketball game featuring the world famous Harlem Wizards playing local celebrities. Tickets are required. I think the town's selling tickets. I think it's at Sun Valley High School. It's on the 3rd. And my understanding, we already have 31 players, or 32 players for that event. And the Harlem Wizards are kinda like the Harlem Globetrotters. So, this ought to be a fun game, and it's my understanding that there's gonna be at least one person from each school in Indian, did I say that right? Is it each school in Indian Trail? They're from 11 schools or, so, anyway, it'll be, it ought to be a lot of fun, and it ought to be funny. And they kinda asked, it didn't kinda, they asked me to coach the team. So, I've never had to coach. If anybody's ever coached a basketball team, how do you coach a team with 32 players? So, that ought to be a lot of fun, and we'll make the best out of it. On February the 17th, we have a love bug dance. Dance the night away with your little love bug. Join us for a special night of music, games, crafts, and lots of dancing. Come dressed in your best. Families and kids 12 and under. Pre-registration is required. So, there's younger children, it'd be great to come dad and bring the girls up and come dance with them. That ought to be a good, and we're also having, and it's not on here, we have the Dinner Theater here, I think Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, where it's downstairs in the Shirley Howell Room. Now, I really shouldn't tell you about it because it's sold out, but because it's sold out, this is really a murder mystery. I think they've got, I know they have two shows on Saturday and two shows on Sunday, and I know they have at least one on Friday. And each one seats 60 people, and they are sold out. And dinner will be served down there, and it'll be catered in. So, remember that the next time, because it's a very popular, and it sounds like a very popular event to do. So, with that being said, let's get started. Agenda, do I have any additions or deletions? Nope? Can I get a motion to...
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. All in favor? Unanimous. So, I guess we got a motion to approve the agenda. Did you just do that?
Yeah, motion to approve the agenda, yes, sir.
Alright, so you've done that. Alright, presentations. We got a wayfinding with Mr. McLam.
I brought props this evening, y'all. I don't know if y'all remember, back early part of 2022, the state budget approved some funds for the town. One of those sets of funds was about $50,000 for wayfinding sign around town. We, as an internal group of staff, have met, went around, looked at all of our wayfinding signs, thought about how people move around town now. We put a memo in your packet with a couple of recommendations. It is to take a little bit of a different, I guess, position than what we've taken in the past. And what that is to do is to actually remove most of the wayfinding signs that are out there today, and replace those with "Welcome to Indian Trail" signs on some of our key entrance locations, not including, we wouldn't put any on Old Char, or, sorry, on Old Monroe Road because of construction going on, and also on 74 because we would look to those to be future recommendations, to put more monument-type gateway signs in the future, not just these signs that you see here. Our other recommendation would be to, our planning department in the town does a village concept, so you have Sun Valley Village, you have Austin Village as a village center, is to start demarcating those as they are developing out. So, the two that are developed right now would be Sun Valley and would be Austin Village. So, as you come into those villages, you would also have secondary signs, like the one you see in front of Mike that says Austin Village. It would kinda tell you that you were in that area of town. It is still branded with the town seal and the town color, so you would know it was part of the town. The last recommendation would be to leave, but to also modify three-way finding signs that are in kinda more the downtown area that point to government buildings or parks. The other one would be one of those we would install again after the roundabout was installed over near Cricket Creek, would be to point you down to where Cricket Creek Park is at. We don't have any prices yet on that, but what we do have is these two mockups that Abby was so gracious to do for us. And then we had printed up just on small, thin boards so that you could see what they were. They are pretty much to size as to what they would be. They would then be put on nicer black decorative posts, and we would look to put a couple of bushes and maybe a solar-powered like uplight on them so that you could see them at night as well. That is our recommendation right now, and we'd look for any comments or then an approval to move forward or to go a different direction.
Yes, Mr. McLam. When these were put up, I couldn't believe what the town paid for them. They paid $150,000 for them about 10 years ago, I think, and with inflation, you're probably looking at real dollars today, $300,000. So, I mean, we're not gonna just throw those things away, are we?
No, so we can actually, those are bolted onto concrete. There's a concrete, like block basically in the ground with bolts going down into it. We can remove those. If we can modify the existing signs and be able to use some of the posts that's there, that would be our hope, and that's what we've gotta look at. We have a couple of those that have been pulled down for other projects that sit up on our yard right now, and we'll look to try and modify one of those to see what we can do with it before we move forward in a completely different direction.
Yeah, I mean, I just can't see throwing them away, all of them, any of them, you know, with the amount of money we spent for them. There's gotta be some kind of a use that we could put in the parks or...
And definitely, we'll be able to use them at different locations around town as other things develop. You know, maybe if another, you know, we needed another wayfinding sign. What we found when we went and drove around town is actually a lot of our wayfinding signs have misinformation on them. So, they point a certain way, but that's not the way you go to get to what you're trying to get to now. And they were installed 10 years ago, and we don't really, nobody says anything to us about, like, why is this pointing to the left when really I have to go up and make a U-turn and then turn right to get to where I wanna go? So, that's...
Well, a lot of them are gonna have to be moved anyway because of road widening and that sort of thing, but I'd like to see them put to good use someplace.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, plus they won't, the old ones won't be uniform with the new signs. They won't look the same, will they?
So, what we, what we did not bring a mockup of is the wayfinding. We would actually, the three that we're gonna keep, we would change them to a blue background kind of like this with white lettering and with, I believe it's a green, because it's part of our like color scheme, a green line kinda towards the bottom, just to break up the color a little bit. So, it would kinda mimic this. If you know what our wayfinding signs look like right now, they have the "it" logo at the top. That would go away, and it would be replaced with the town seal, the actual like more circular town seal.
Right, I noticed that they have an Ohio-looking theme to them.
Anybody else? Adam, if you would, pick one up and turn it around so people can see it. I don't know if anybody's seen that or not, kinda...
So, I'll go back to the mic in a second. So, that's that one.
So, that one that says Austin Village would also, it would just change and say Sun Valley. I think it's Sun Valley Entertainment District is the way that we have it written on the sign right now.
But it would still say Indian Trail somewhere.
It would still say, everything would be the same on that one, except for Austin Village would come off, and it would say Sun Valley.
But it'll say the town of Indian Trail also.
Yes, just, it'll have the town seal on it, but the entry signs will have, will be like this. So, there will be like one of these on, right now, we're planning on Wesley, in that Sun Valley area, you'd have like Wesley Chapel, there would be one. We would put one down on the Old Charlotte end of Old Monroe Road because, right near the Community College, because it's not part of the construction project right now. So, it would be so long in the future that it probably would be a location to put one.
Very good. Just one, one quick note. Adam, I didn't know you were gonna get up and speak that way tonight, and you made Councilman Gay's night, I'm gonna tell you that right now, and I'll tell you why. Is, he's criticized me for those signs 10 years ago, being the only one that I, up here that's on council that voted for those signs 10 years ago. And at that time, they were, they were a good idea. Now, he doesn't think they were, but Dennis, you got, you can chalk that one up for you that, that we're getting rid of them. But, you know, I thought of a good thing to do with those signs. We could put them in the historic, the side now, because, actually, this, 10 years ago, they were a good idea. Matthews had them, and they were beautiful, and they went up, and we thought that would really enhance the town and make it look very nice. Unfortunately, right about then or a couple of years later, people quit looking at signs and started looking at their phone on where they go everywhere, and you really don't, really don't need to get directions from signs anymore. So, with that being said, thank you for coming up and...
So, if I can just get either a recommendation to keep moving forward in this direction, and, you know, we'd bring back a cost before we move forward, but I just kinda would like that recommendation?
I, speaking for myself, I say, go ahead, keep pressing on.
Okay. Dennis, you...
Alright.
Just don't throw away 150,000 dollar signs.
Dennis, hey, 20 years from now, we might change these signs. Thank you. Next, we have Kerry Warner, Human Resources. We have a new employee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Happy New Year, and welcome, Samantha. It's fun to see you up there. Oh, here you are. I was gonna say, over here. I just wanted to introduce you to Bobby Morin. He is our new IT Administrator. Joined us January 3rd, so it's been, what, seven days now?
Yeah, just a week.
And we haven't ran him off yet, so Abby's really happy to have him, and so are we. Just a little bit about Bobby. We took him from the town of Fort Mill. He was the IT Administrator there for about five years. And prior to that, he worked for IKEA for six years in different IT positions. Fun fact about Bobby is he's been a busy guy lately. He just got married, just moved into a new house, and just started a new job, all in one month. So, he's been a very busy person, but we're very happy to have him join our IT team.
You're welcome.
Have any questions about Bobby?
Tell me again, what is his last name?
My last name is Morin.
Morin.
Morin, yep.
Well, my best friend grew up with him, is Bobby Morgan, and I thought you said Bobby Morgan. Yeah. Was there anything you'd like to say, or...
No, I just, I'm super excited to be here. And, you know, I think I've said that probably 15 million times this week, but everything is, everything is new, everything's exciting, so let's see what we can do.
Well, Bobby, you're more than welcome here, and you're working with one of the finest staffs anywhere in the United States. I can tell you that.
They've been phenomenal.
And I hope, I hope you know that, I think you do, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kerry. That brings us to public comments. Do you still have the public comment form? Thank you. We have one tonight. I don't even have the folder, but I don't think I need it tonight for reading the rules. If Elizabeth, I take it you're gonna come up and behave yourself, so...
I'll do my very best.
This is Elizabeth, Elizabeth, is it Carpenter?
Carpenter, yes.
Very good. And you're with?
With Common Heart.
Common Heart, there we go.
Thank you. So, I'm Elizabeth, I have some little visual aids. There's one.
I'll pass, we'll pass it down. You can take, here, take one and pass it down.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the mayor introduced, my name's Elizabeth Carpenter, and I'm the newest member of the Common Heart staff team. Our executive director Keith wanted to be here tonight, but he has a regular board meeting also scheduled for the second Tuesday of every month, so you're stuck with me. I think it's maybe a new staff initiation that I get to come and present to you all. We really just wanted to give a huge thank you to the council for our new refrigeration system down at Common Heart. Y'all had a grant for us, and we've been able to overhaul our entire refrigeration system. As you can see, there's some before and after pictures on those flyers that you got. They were installed the week after Christmas. It's already making a huge impact on our ability to feed our neighbors in Indian Trail. As most of you probably know, Common Heart is a grassroots organization that started with Keith's wife Deb and her friend delivering groceries to their friends in need. And it grew from a garage to not one, but two facilities, one of which is here in Indian Trail, the other is down in Marshville. This is 16 years. It's just grown and grown to serve our Indian Trail neighbors. So, through the donation of our new refrigeration system, you all are a part of a small revolution of kindness, not only for our entire county, but specifically for Indian Trail residents. In 2022, we served approximately 1,200 individuals and 310 families here in Indian Trail. We gather food every day from individual donations and local grocery rescue, and so the new refrigeration units allow us to store at an even greater capacity. It's making our facility feel really small now, but that's a good problem to have. Keith especially wants to thank Town Manager Michael McLaurin of Public Works and Adam McLam. He could not speak highly enough of you. He just said Adam was the best and really helped make it happen, so we could not have done it without all of you. Thank you all so much for your generosity and for prioritizing nonprofits in Indian Trail. Because of your gift, we're able to continue to serve half of the food and secure people in our county. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any council feedback? Nope?
You're welcome.
Thank you, yes.
Feedback, right?
That's great feedback.
That brings us to our law enforcement update. Captain Hunky, welcome. You've done this before, filling in before, but this is your, this is your job now.
This is, yeah, my official first one, and...
And we're excited, we're excited.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it, and that's, she's very tough to follow, because, you know, talking about how great you guys have been and to help in our community, now I'm gonna stand up here and talk about wrecks and crashes and crime, so, please don't let me bring you guys down. I really don't want to. You all have the packet. We've had a little uptick in our, our traffic and reportable crimes. I think we're gonna give that credit to our holiday traffic. And, you know, last month, this is November stats, or excuse me, December stats, you know, we had pretty rough weather to kinda contribute to that. And like I said, with the, with the holiday, you're usually gonna have a little bit of uptick with, with some property crimes, but overall, nothing, nothing exciting to report, and no news is good news from, from my angle. So, if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Any questions? I have, how was the holiday? I know the holiday season is a busy, like everybody else, it's a busy time of year for you guys.
It's, it's amazing how that works. I will say this, our community is a blessing, a loving community. We've had more gifts, snacks, love given, shown to our, our department over there, and, you know, we can't be more happy. So, you know, again, we have a little bit of uptick of, of some larcenies and wrecks and stuff, but again, the, the community as a whole is a very great blessing, so...
Well, thank you for all y'all do. We appreciate you very much.
You're doing a great job getting there, keep it up.
Mom and Dad, are we still good, or...
We're good.
Okay, alright. Alright, that brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? Unanimous? You can raise your hand too. There you go. I have no public hearings tonight. Got old business. We're gonna bring ARPA update with Mr. McLam again.
So, I actually, I'll start off the conversation again tonight with, I actually reached out to Keith today, not knowing that you were coming tonight, and I reached out to him, and I just said, hey, I just wanted to check, make sure the refrigeration units got there, everything's good. And he was like, I'm so sorry, and I said, why? And he goes, because you had to call me. I was gonna call you and just got busy and never was able to do it. So, that was kinda the conversation today. So, kinda the way that what just happened, what we're gonna do over the next two or three meetings is we're gonna have some of the agencies that y'all have been so gracious to help out through the surplus funds to reach out, they're, we're gonna have them come in to talk to y'all, to tell you what they've been able to do with some of those funds, kinda let y'all and the public see the backside of what's going on with that. So, as we talk tonight, we're gonna talk about kinda two different things. We're gonna talk about, Todd's gonna come up in a minute and talk about stormwater component that we're looking at using ARPA funds for. But one thing I will say is, is we roll down into the surplus dollars, all surplus dollars for this fiscal year have been accounted for at this point. So, that's through the nonprofits that y'all have chosen to help, that's through the volunteer fire departments for the fire trucks, that's the athletic associations that we helped last year through just general dollars. That would be the mini-bus that we're looking at purchasing for parks and wrecks, so those kinds of projects. One keynote right now is we have a public meeting scheduled in this building for January the 30th at 6:00 PM for the waterline extension project that y'all are partnering with, with Union County on, for the residents in the Emerald Woods neighborhood. So, that, again, that's in this building, January 30th at 6:00 PM. And I know, Mr. McIntyre, I still owe you how many residents are over there, but I need to get that for you. The three main projects that we've been working a lot on right now, which would be Food for Families, Common Heart, and Cameron's House of Hope, we're looking to wrap up here in the next month or so. We hope to have all of their items that they've requested and that had been approved surplus to them, and they will be in use by them. Other than that, I don't really think I have anything else unless if y'all have any questions for me.
Any questions? Very good, thank you.
Alright, now Todd's gonna come up.
Mr. Hunsinger.
Mayor, Council, as you recall, go back to First Avenue, during that project, we were unable to, we had designated funds, stormwater, ARPA funds, for that project and was unable to use them. So, what we've been, as staff's trying to do is, have been looking at other places to be able to do some stormwater maintenance projects. We already have in queue the Poplin Glen Stormwater Improvement Project that we could, we can use that for, but again, that's a small project, so we want to be able to find other ways of getting small, other small projects and lump them into one bigger contract. And so, me and Adam, obviously been here long enough to know where a lot of the old pipe crossings that need to be replaced, and we haven't pursued that, and we're going to in the future, but now that we know we can use, we have funds to move forward certain maintenance projects like that, we've identified five that basically are old corrugated metal pipe, and these are from 36 to 56 in diameter that need to be replaced. And so, what I wanna do is, is get, hire a survey company, which is what's on the table tonight, is to basically do a service contract for a survey company to go out and survey these pipes, get the elevations and all that. And then we're working with the consultant right now to, with their proposal, to go out and do a hack, hackarass modeling of those pipes, make, to make sure, either it's gonna be a standard replaced, the same size, or do we need to upsize it for the future? And, you know, nine times out of 10, you usually have to upside these pipes. So, I'm here tonight just to get approval to, for our service contract, to do surveying for $11,025 using ARPA funds. Any questions?
I mean, I missed part of what you said, but, your corrugated pipe, do you get that galvanized?
Well, we don't know what these pipes were back in the day. I mean, I know they're corrugated metal pipe, I don't know if they were galvanized or not, but the problem is they eroded over time at the bottom of the pipe where the water flows, and eventually, you know, those things just need to be replaced, and so we wanna go ahead and do that while we have these additional funds.
If you get a gallon, good galvanized coating on them, they won't rust.
Well, yes, yes, I mean, that's what you do now. You've got, you got several tiers, you got, I think, I think it's three tiers. You can do a 50-year coating, you can do a 100-year coating. I think they can do any, and that's just a 25, I'm not sure about that. But yeah, you have different ways, it's just basically, however you wanna, how much you wanna spend the money to buy the pipe.
With that survey, there's no expiration date on it, is there? If we spend the money now, we want to come back 36 months from now if it's not done, do another survey?
No, no, it's just, it's just trying to, because we, obviously, these ARPA funds have a timeframe, and so we're just trying to push hard to try to get some other projects down the queue that we wasn't expecting based on the fact we thought we could use the First Avenue project. So, I'm just trying to get the schedule going so we don't get hit by those deadlines in the future.
Do I have any more questions? Can I get a motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve allowing the town manager to execute the contract with Tidewater Land Services and to use the American Rescue Plan Act funding for professional services to include surveying, review, and certification of town culverts in the amount of $11,025.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Okay, next, Mr. McLaurin.
Good evening, and good evening to our special guest. We're glad to have you here, and you're doing a great job up there, so, maybe in a few years, you'll be ready to run yourself, so you got your train in here tonight. We've got a policy for you tonight involving opening of closed session minutes. Now, as you know, in North Carolina, all of our regular meetings, the minutes are open to the public. Occasionally, we will go into closed session primarily for real estate litigation, personnel, and a few other things. The statute provides on those closed session minutes, once it's no longer an issue, once the matter has been resolved, with the exception of personnel, the council is free to open those minutes up for public inspection. So, what we wanted to do in order to make sure that we're as transparent as we can as a town government, we have a policy for you tonight that we would like you to approve. we have a policy for you tonight that we would like you to approve, which would allow us to open certain closed session minutes. The way the policy would work is twice a year, typically in January and July, we would look at the previous six months meetings and see if those closed session minutes, we would redact any information that's not confidential. We would send it to the attorney for the attorney's review. And then, assuming that is, goes through, we would then put it on the agenda to let you know that we would be opening certain closed session minutes. When we do that, we would then have a two-week time period in which any council member can come in and inspect those minutes. And then the following meeting, we will put it on consent to officially open those. That's essentially what the policy says that's in your agenda. We think it's a good policy. It's been vetted by the clerk and the attorney, and we would ask for your approval.
Very good. Well, thank you, Mike. Um, I think that was fairly well explained. Um, so we're not gonna vote, we're actually not gonna vote on this tonight. We're, or, or, I don't see a motion on here, so.
We, we have a motion listed if you would like to approve the policy tonight, or if you would like to move it to the previous meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I see it. Okay, yes. Okay, can I get a motion?
I got a question.
Okay.
It says 18, 2018, but you're saying the past six months. I mean, 2008, but you're saying the past six months.
Are you looking at item B on the agenda, or?
Maybe I got ahead of myself.
Yeah, we're, we're at item A right now, on the policy itself.
Yeah, I was confused too. I thought, I thought we were on the next one. That's okay.
9A is ARPA updated.
No.
Number 10, I had it by.
10A.
If we change that policy, um, I had a question about the next one though, and if we approve that policy, we will be a moot point.
Well, can I, before we move to the next one, can I ask a question there, Mr. Mayor?
Certainly, go ahead.
Alright, um, I, I believe in sunlight. I believe in letting the residents know exactly what goes on, you know, absent personnel or, you know, legal issues. I, I, I'm in fully support of that. But my one question is tonight, there's three of us here on the council that are voting members. The mayor is present as the fourth person. Would it be prudent to kind of, you, we have Ms. Ms. Bahalik and Mr. Bobbin on there. Would it be terribly difficult if we moved this to the next meeting to let, kinda get their opinion on it?
Yes, sir.
I understand majority rules. I'm not against that, having to do that this evening. But they're unforeseen circumstances. They're not there. Just to kinda get their input if possible. But that's my, that's just my opinion, not the rest of the members will make that decision.
At, at this point, Marcus, you've made it an issue. So we're, we're, it's probably better that we do it. Um, I will say this, it's, it's very well explained. And, uh, you know, I love you, Marcus, but I, I haven't know that, why anybody would have an objection to that a, a, at all. That, that's, it's really a pretty cut and dry, uh, you know, it's, you know, openness and, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't think they have a problem, but since Mr. McIntyre brought it up, we can definitely do that.
No, but you can put it to, you can also put it to a vote too if you wanna.
I just can't imagine anybody having an objection to that. But that's okay.
The motion can be put to a vote. I just gave a suggestion.
No, 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 no. We'll go, we'll, we'll, what would you rather do?
Kathy Queen should vote.
Kathy Queen should've got a hand.
Kathy, Kathy?
May I just make a comment? What we're trying to do tonight is just the process of looking at the records. We won't actually, I know on the, on the motion sheet, there is a motion, but on the agenda, there's not a motion scheduled until, this motion will be made in two weeks. So, what we're doing now is cleaning out the really old ones. And we even had a different form of government, so most of it's redacted because it's personnel related and such. So, um, right now, we're just cleaning up the really old ones. And then we'll start moving forward with 2008 all the way up to present. Um, so tonight is just the policy.
With that being said, um, I'm still struggling with 10B. Um, I know that we want to approve the policy. However, there's a six-year gap on the next minutes, um, releasing those minutes. There's a six-year gap between 1988, I'm sorry, 1996 and 2002. I don't understand why there's a gap there. Does that apply to the, what we're talking about?
Not really. We don't have a copy of those minutes, as I understand.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Uh, back, back in the day, um, when the town was much smaller and things were done much differently.
Okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay.
I just, I'd rather go ahead and make a motion on this first one, since it doesn't really matter. I mean, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and, uh, and approve opening closed session poli- or having a closed session policy. And then if there's an issue, um, in two weeks or whatever, then that could be discussed. But, I mean, may as well clean all that stuff out. It's ancient history now.
This is for the policy only.
Yeah.
And the item B would simply be, those would be the first two books that we would release, but we're not gonna release them for two weeks. And you have a chance to inspect those.
So I make a motion that we approve.
All in favor? Unanimous? Marcus, you, I didn't mean that bad in any way. I just, you know.
Let's, let's move on. A motion was made, vote was taken, let's go.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Alright, the next item you've got, we've recently got a note from, um, the North Carolina League of Municipalities, uh, to get our feedback on legislative goals that you would like to see them pursue. Now, we're a member of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Our, uh, counterparts in the county are members of the North Carolina County Commission Association. And each organization about this time of year looks at what kinda legislative goals are important to the cities. Um, the league put together, uh, several meetings and surveys, and they came up with 400 ideas. And they narrowed them down to 16 legislative goals. And they're asking us to vote on those, or your designee, who would be Crystal Bahalik, to vote on those on the 13th. So what we wanted to do for you tonight is walk through those 16 items and share with you the 10, because they're asking each city to vote for 10, that we feel you ought to support. In looking at those legislative goals, I sat down with, I think Todd, Brandy, Adam. I think those were the three that we walked through. So, we'll walk through some slides as we get through those. If there's any questions, or if you wanna add any other goals that you would like us to convey to Ms. Bahalik when she gets back in, uh, we can certainly do that. Okay? Alright, you should have a hard copy at your desk. Abby? Yep, here it is. Alright. Now, the, the challenge you've got in North Carolina is you've got towns from the scale of 500 people to cities like the city of Charlotte with over 800,000. So they have to develop these legislative goals to be extremely broad. And so these are listed in no particular priority order. But the first goal you see is, uh, create funding for an adequate and permanent funding of local infrastructure. We spend a lot of our time, you know, both as a staff and you as a council, talking about roads and stormwaters and parks and, and economic development will continue to be very important as we move into the future. Um, extend li- extend the deadlines for completion of federal infrastructure, uh, projects. As we have looked at ARPA funding, one of the challenges that we have had and that others have had that we've shared with you are things like material shortages, uh, lead times on projects. And so we're asking that, that they work to extend the deadline for completion of infrastructure projects. Expand the state transportation funding streams for construction and maintenance of municipal and state-owned secondary roads. When the pile bill was created a number of years ago, it was based on the gas tax. Well, what's happened is vehicles have gotten more fuel efficient. And so the pile bill was no longer serving the need that it needs to serve. And with the advent of electric cars, Dennis, that will, that will bring up some different challenges too. Uh, support integrated and multimodal transportation solutions. As we start to look at Indian Trail Road and other forms of connectivity in the town, we wanna be able to have funding so we can, we can provide those and build those projects. One of the things that the county is grasping with right now is the express bus to Charlotte. Right now, the county is funding that, but, you know, that may or may not stay in place. Uh, state funding for public transportation. The more cities like Charlotte and Raleigh can put people on buses and other forms of transportation, the less cars we have on the road for people in the suburbs that can get into the city. Expand local economic development. Expand incentives to encourage regionalization of water and sewer, as well as other municipal services. Now, this is primarily, I think, geared to some of the smaller communities in North Carolina. Uh, one of the things that smaller communities across the state are having, particularly in their water and sewer systems, are that they're going broke and they don't have the money to fund them. And so the state, and I think the league is supporting trying to get regionalization whenever possible. Um, goal number eight, enhance state system and resources for local law enforcement recruitment. Right now, about every police agency and sheriff's office I know are dealing with personnel shortages and the ability to retain officers, particularly long-term officers. It seems like there's, um, we're losing them as soon as we can get them in the door. Update annexation. The way annexation used to work in North Carolina, the first annexation act was passed in 1959. It was considered a model for the rest, for the whole state, and it served the state very well for many years. In 19, the 19, mid 1980s, uh, the state made some changes to the annexation law. And right around 2008, 2009, 2010, somewhere right in there, pretty much the state did away with annexation. And so what happens is, a town will get development right outside the town limits that's impacting the town, but the town doesn't have the ability to grow, you know, with that development. Pretty much the only type of annexation we can do right now is voluntary annexation. And you've had several of those come before this council where they would wanna get their development improved, approved, and also be annexed into the city. Typically, if you look at a county-city relationship, a lot of times, cities have higher standards for development, such as sidewalks, street lights, and things like that. Um, provide local revenue option beyond the property tax. Right now, our two main sources of revenue are the property tax and the sales tax. But, um, because we're not a home rule state, our ability to generate certain other revenues have to be approved by the general assembly. So there's a goal to, to look at, um, the legislature to provide other options to, to cities and towns. Those were our top 10. Um, the others that we have, uh, goal 11, 12, and 13, we did not list those in our top 10. Deal with affordable housing, revitalizing vacant and abandoned properties, uh, provide state assistance for yearly audits. That's another one primarily geared to the small towns. Um, if you do not do an annual audit, the state will come talk to you. And for some of these very small towns, an audit can run 15, $20,000 that they just can't absorb in their budget. We're, we're seeing more and more small towns in this state being placed on what they call the unit assistance list, which means the state is having to come in and do more handholding and supervision of their finances. Um, contracting laws to better protect public entities from the effects of inflation, provide authority to municipal water and sewer systems to recoup costs from cleanup from polluters. We don't do water. The county does water. Um, allow municipalities to use local resources and capacities to expand broadband to fit in their communities. We don't do broadband. Uh, there are just a handful of cities right now in North Carolina that does broadband. Several years ago, the level playing field took effect, which pretty much put the cities out of doing a lot with their broadband. And so those are the, the 16 proposals from the league. Um, you have our top 10, and just wanna see if there's any questions. Yes, sir?
McIntyre?
Um, Mr. McLaurin, what is the possibility of some of these, um, goals becoming law? Cause I know it's the league, league, but then you have the state and, um, the senate and the, um, the house.
Yep.
What are the, the possibilities of this?
Um, I think some of them, they will make some headway. Some of them not. I mean, I think things like annexation, uh, may not make it very far. Maybe the, um, some of the revenues potentially could, and the law enforcement.
You mentioned, um, the annexation. What is, I was in reading that, what's the proposed threshold? I know they have 100% right there, but what is the proposed threshold? Do they have that?
I, I don't know that they have come up with what sort of formula they're looking at. Um, on a personal note, I have been on some legislative committees in South Carolina. And a lot of times, you put these proposals out there, and then it's kinda like making sausage. You get into the committees and, so.
Alright. Yeah, um, Mike, you went through each one of them, um, gave a paragraph on each goal. But goal number six, the expand incentives and funding for local economic development, you just said that and moved on. You don't have anything to elaborate with that?
Well, these are bullet points that the league has provided. And so, uh, probably what I could add to that is providing certain incentives, particularly based on job creation, perhaps incentives based on infrastructure upgrades. Um, I don't think you were on the council at the time, but one of the things we did is kind of an economic incentive was for Indian Trail Town Center, we kicked in money to do a waterline upgrade along with the developer and I think county economic development. One of the things that's been, and I'll mention this very quickly in passing, one of the things that's been very important to this state is the film tax credits, particularly around the Wilmington-Southport area. There's also been a number of films that have occurred inside the, the Charlotte region. But again, these were all broad with subtopics.
Any more questions? With that being said, uh, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve as the, well, Ms. Bahalik is not there. So, alright, let, let me try and make that motion in English. Sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the North Carolina League of Municipalities, um, I guess, top 10 legislative goals.
Right.
Through December 31st, 2023.
And if I could, I'd had a conversation with her before she, uh, left, and she's comfortable with the staff providing the feedback, feedback.
So consensus is good with that, if you were in consensus for her to be your representative to vote?
Did you make a motion, Mr. McIntyre?
I did.
Okay. So all in favor? Unanimous?
Okay. Several things real quick, and then I'll be.
Oh, you're gonna stay there and do the manager's, uh?
Update. Yes, sir. Alright, I think everybody already knows about the water lines in Emerald Woods, uh, that Adam mentioned. Uh, we're still working on Indian Trail Road. Uh, phase one, we're working with the utility company, uh, still on the underground utilities. Uh, phase two, which is the outer ends, um, they're still working to try to validate some data so we can do the design work. If you have gone down Indian Trail Road, I think you have perhaps seen some various stakes along the road, which I think is part of that project. We're currently about to begin right-of-way acquisition on Shady Bluff Road. Just to remind you, Shady Bluff Road is a one-lane road. Uh, we will create a two-lane road with sidewalks. We'll give you better connectivity. And we're using some of the money provided by the legislature for that. Any questions? Okay.
I just said I've been breaking the law. I think you said blow one.
Okay. Alright, let, let, alright, let me run through some other things very quickly. Next meeting on the 24th, we'll have our auditor here. Uh, you have your copy of the audit right here. I'd ask that you get that before you leave. Keep in mind, what the audit does is a snapshot of your financial. Keep in mind, what the audit does is a snapshot of your financial picture as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And what they do is not only look at your numbers, they look at your internal control systems to make sure there's not any material weakness. The process that they use is, once they do the audit, they then send it to the local government commission, which is part of the state treasurer's office, and once they sign off, then the auditor can come in and give you a report. If, when they do the audit, if the local government commission finds an area that they're concerned about, such as a material weakness, that being not adequate internal checks and balances, they will write the town, and they will tell the town thirty days to correct it. Don't ignore the letter if you ever get it, because they don't forget it. But I'm pleased to report that for yet another year, we've had a very clean audit. Jim and his staff deserve a round of credit for that. The auditors come in, the records are always in good shape, and the auditors leave happy, and when they're happy, we're happy. We will also do an ARPA update next meeting. We will have a janitorial contract. We will do the closed meeting minutes that we've already talked about. There will be a request for road closure for July fourth and Christmas parade, and we will also request that you authorize us to apply for a fireworks permit as part of Family Fun Day. The other two items I want to mention to you are just more FYI. Two or three years ago, we did a salary study. Tom, I don't think you were on the board, Dennis, I don't think you were. This is something you need to do every few years, just to make sure you don't fall behind. We'll be doing that again this year. The information will be coming out in the spring, you can look at it. We think we're in pretty good shape right now, but it's something that you don't want to let lag too long, so that will be coming up, and just sharing a little bit about that, and you can consider that as you finalize your budget later this spring. The other item I want to mention to you, the last item, is we're working with UNCC MPA program, Masters of Public Administration. The MPA students, before they can graduate, they have to engage in what they call a capstone program, where they work with cities and they take a certain project that they want to look at. And so we have submitted a proposal to them to let the MPA students look at a topic we call alternative revenue, to look at other cities, what are their revenue streams, and what types of alternate revenues do they see as being important? Let me give you an example. We know that when we redid our solid waste contract, it pretty much doubled, and it's continuing to grow as the cities grow. We also know that our tax rate is one of the lowest around, and we want to keep it that way. So what we want to do is have the MPA students look to see what other cities are doing, bring back some thoughts, bring back some recommendations. We're not going to implement any recommendations in this coming budget year, but after July first, this will give the council a chance to look at it in greater depth and see if, when you start to do your FY twenty-five budget, if there's some things you want to explore. Hopefully, that will tie in also, Tom, to some of the work that the league's doing with the legislature, particularly if they give you some different avenues for revenue. And that's all I've got, unless there's any questions.
Mike, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good job, Mr. McLaurin. That brings us, Ms. Cox, this is council comments.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Oh, thank you. If I can get everybody's assistance, the last time we met, I think, was early December. That very night, we were not able to give a round of applause to Adam because he was not in the building, but Adam, as you know, or as you should know, graduated with his masters in December. I remember when he started, as somebody who went through a similar program, including a capstone project. I know how difficult a task it is, full-time job, three-quarter time husband, half-time dad, you know, because you have to put some time in for the work, but he was able to do it with the support of his family, his wife. So please, a round of applause to Adam. Adam, congratulations, we're all proud of you, job well done. I think, Mike, you told me there's somebody else that we have on our radar soon, who's also in a program that we will recognize the very same way.
LSU.
Thank you. Want to say, welcome to Samantha, you did really well tonight, you are the best behaved council member ever, ever in Indian Trail, so really good job there. Mike, good news on the audit, Jim, that's a testament to your staff, the things that you guys do down there. Happy New Year to all of you, and Bobby, congrats on the marriage, congrats on the new job, congrats on the new house, and welcome to Indian Trail. Thank you.
Councilmember Ambergy?
Marcus stole my thunder with Adam. Congratulations, Adam. But I hope everyone had a nice Christmas and a pleasant New Year with your friends and family. There's light at the tunnel with the railroad crossing here in Indian Trail. I'm sure a lot of you know, they dropped off a bunch of supplies this past week, so praise God. I just want to give a little note for you guys, it's Facebook Live, this Friday at one o'clock, we have Sheriff Caffey going to be on there, so you might want to tune in, he's a wonderful man, you know, I'm sure you better know. Well, God bless y'all, thank you, thanks for helping me out there.
Okay.
I'd like to thank Samantha and her parents for coming, and hope you come back and join us more. The more people we have come to our meetings, the more they're involved in the town and know what we, what we do up here and have an input, if you can do comments, council comments or whatever beforehand, and express any concerns that you might have. Just a question for Mike, are you sure the UNCC folks would do a better job than the App State folks?
Certainly.
Anyway, the staff's done a great job on dealing with railroad, I've dealt with them in the past in business, and you talk about bureaucracy, that is a bureaucracy, and they are huge, they're massive, they've got rules and regulations, I've sold steel to them before, and they have to send, anything that they, they bring in, they pretty much have to have an outside testing lab test the material before they'll approve it to go out on the rails, because they have a huge responsibility, and it's, their job's difficult, believe me, and most people don't realize what the railroads go through, just for liability's sake. So thank you to the staff for trudging through all that and, and working with the railroad to get that done. Anyway, I hope everybody has a safe journey home tonight, and hope you'll come back again. Thank you.
Councilmember Samantha?
I thank everybody for being so nice to me, this is my first time going to a council meeting, it was really, I enjoyed myself, listening to everything that's happening in the town, and just thank you for letting me come and giving me a tour, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Very good.
Mayor, come.
Boy, how do you follow that? I don't know. She's amazing, you are amazing, you're a very smart girl, and I sit here and watch you, and she is, she followed along, and she, you knew, I think you knew everything we were talking about today, which was amazing, and I'm so proud that you're sitting here beside me, and hope you do it again, and go back and tell all the kids at Indian Trail. You are, you are, okay, very, very good. I'd like to thank everybody for coming, and also, person I'd like to mention, how about Sam Howe? How about Sam Howe? I mean, listen, I'm not real crazy about the Redskins, I'm a fan now that Sam's on the team, but I would, I shouldn't say this, but I'd pull for about anybody but Dallas, so, you know, I was pulling real hard for him, and he did a wonderful, wonderful job, and it was just a great day to watch. The man throws his first pass as an NFL starter, and he throws it for a touchdown, ran for another, and of course, they beat the Cowboys, so Sam Howe, we're proud of you, man, we're super, super proud of you, and that was like the national game of the week. And Clarence, I know you're friends with his dad, went to school with his dad at Sun Valley High School, any talk, did you talk to him at all?
I didn't, but it's all over Facebook, so I wasn't going to stand in line to say anything.
I hear you, I hear you, but it was, it was a fabulous day, and Indian Trail was mentioned several times on there, and that's really got to make you proud, made me really proud that Indian Trail was mentioned on there. I'd like to thank the staff, you know, we're talking about the railroad tracks, I'd like to thank the staff for staying on the railroad tracks. We got a lot of criticism, you know, council staff, the town, for the railroad tracks. And Mike, I know you made a lot of phone calls to CSX to get, to get that done, and it got done, and I appreciate it, I appreciate everything staff did working on that, and it took a long time, but as Mike kept saying over and over again, man, you don't mess with a railroad, do you? Railroad will put you in jail if you go out there and try to touch your railroad tracks. So anyway, now that's done, Bobby, welcome, welcome to this great place, I really believe that, and Happy New Year to everybody. Samantha, again, thank you for coming, and can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yes. Samantha, I just want to say before I say this, very articulate fourth grader. You speak very well, very clearly, very precise.
Amazing.
That's really nice.
Thank you.
And in so doing, motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Unanimous. Can we get a picture of her with her hand raised? I don't want that.